Yeah. Walking through the woods.
I'm glad I wasn't out there then, because otherwise it would have been me.
And to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get started with our regular meeting here, opening with our activity reports. I have all of nothing to report. I was not able to make the park tour or the land tour earlier today due to work obligation, but we care about that for everyone else. Mr. Hertzberg.
Okay, actually, this was probably last meeting, but I forgot it. August thirtieth, we had a contract meeting and we're waiting for the employees to vote, I believe. We tentatively have a little bit of an agreement, and I'm glad we can get that done hopefully before the first of the year. A lot of years, it was one or two years behind the eight ball. September fifteenth, I had a meeting with the area center. Their biggest thing is October first, which is this Friday night, they have a fall festival. Chili, cheese dogs, smores, five to seven at the senior center. Green roof.
It's my dollars.
September sixteenth, we have the employee appreciation day at Vets Park. And I hope our employees had a good time. We appreciated all of our employees and they all do a good job for us. And then at nine at five, we had a special meeting and looked at some property that may be for sale that down by the river.
Ms. Brick.
I don't think I had too many official things, but I attended the employee picnic as well, and I also ended up helping out at the wine club, which was well-attended. So it's nice to see that that's back in the swing of it. And I have seen the property previously. I did not make the meeting today, but be interested to hear the people's thoughts as well.
Ms. Sweeney.
Had planning commission last week, and there's nothing tonight on that. And I went and saw the property and wine club, I was attended.
All right.
Yeah, the joint trails board meeting, but Tarek was up there discussing some options. Went to the employee appreciation and also the Central Park property, Central Avenue property.
All right, thank you. Our department had reports, starting with Mr. Morgen.
All right, thank you. Cruze will be out hydrant or flushing hydrants on the sixth and the seventh of October. Remember, do not do your white laundries on that day. Parks will be closing down on October the twelfth, along with the RV dump. Again, the RV dump will remain open, but just no water available. Reservations for parks, there actually is quite a few coming in for next year already, so that is looking very good. The one exception there to fishing gear, we will leave out past November first. October's always a good period for fishing, so. Library roof, we do have a leak down there. There's a small portion of that that is still, it's shingles. We do need to get them replaced this fall, estimating we're about three thousand, just over that. Out at the airport, if you've seen over the weekend, there was quite a bit of activity out there. We do actually have another contract in our agenda packet. We do have two people on our waiting list also. And the flagpole out there, if anybody has been out there, has been installed. And again, thank you to the credit union for donating that. And they would like a picture with the mayor and the city administrator, so we'll schedule that. Compo site, quite a bit of activity going on out there. The leaf pickup again is November the sixth. And our shit city shop, new purchase, one eleven Pomeroy. The renters will be out of there on October the fifth, so after that.
We will have to be able to do a little work in it.
Library roof, did you say three or thirty?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Yeah.
Make sure I heard you right.
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Ron?
And that would be in their CIP.
That will have to come out of the municipal building CIP.
So there's money there for that.
All right, Mr. Oliver.
Yeah, last week, Paul and I had the police secretary interviews, and he'll give you more detail on that. I attended a call with Ron and Chuck with the Economic Development Authority, learning about some of the federal programs available, especially when it relates to, you know, enhancing or expanding or even a newer industrial park in terms of infrastructure grants. So we thought that went very favorable, and we'll have some more updates in the coming meetings. Was at the trail board meeting as well, and then also on the economic development side. The department or Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, also known as DED, held a webinar on the available programs to small businesses that they can apply for. There are some programs still available for small businesses defined by less than two hundred employees and more than ten thousand dollars in annual revenue. They can apply for and seek assistance, and they they apply with them directly. So I attended that to learn more about any of the programs they currently have.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on then to our consent agenda, which includes the minutes listed on page one, along with the vouchers totaling two hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and four cents. Is there a motion to approve, or anybody desire something faulted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Sony to adopt the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. All right, on to new business then, starting with the fire department and the consumption of alcohol at the fire hall. What if you want to talk to us about that? I presume that's why you're all here.
That is correct. We would like to try to get an amendment to the city ordinance right now. Basically, to be able to serve alcoholic beverage. I'm sorry, retract that, not really serve, but to have alcoholic beverage at the fire hall. Our thought process was, we were approached at a township meeting, and they had asked why we didn't have beer. And we thought, well, we'll ask the question and see what happens.
So just to clarify, the intent would not be to have it there at all times to drink during your regular meetings, but more for special functions?
It'd be special functions, and we would like to have it there in case we had something after, thank you, after a call or whatever, if we needed to sit and debrief or just to have a gathering. And a few of us would have a beer or a drink at times.
Yes, my thought is if our insurance company is okay with it, then I'm fine. I don't know how we'd have to draft the ordinance to do it, but.
Kind of like we do for Veterans Park?
Right.
Is what I would assume.
Is it possible, Bill, to carve something out to permit that?
I mean, I think we could just say. Private in public places except the fire hall, I guess. If we want to make a broad exception for the fire hall, we could do that.
This is not really considered a public place? During your meetings, I suppose anybody can walk in.
Public building.
Yeah.
I mean, I think any building owned by the city is a public place.
Right. Andy won't give me a code, so I don't know.
Wow.
That's politics.
I guess.
Definitely voting against it then.
How many years ago at one point in time, there was beer at the fire hall, correct?
Yes, when I first got on the fire department, we had it there for the township meetings. We'd serve burgers, pots, and have beer there for the.
And what about the fish fry?
And the fish fry, yep.
And that's kind of been ongoing for years.
That is.
So we're doing it for the fish fry, and why did the township quit? And I suppose the ordinance, if you look at it, we were in violation.
I think past administration had an issue with it.
I would prefer to go with this, but have it go for a year, see if there's any issues arise, then revisit it a year down the road, and if everything seems to be going fine, then make it a permanent ordinance.
It's 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 difficult, because I mean, you know, if somebody lived right next door, they could have a bonfire right there and just drink until the cows came home, you know? It's like, it's hard to look at that, but it's the league, it's pretty. In the league of Minnesota cities, it cautions against it, but I think that's mostly from the standpoint is if something happened, then and there can be any case to be made that anyone was impaired, they're not eligible for like their hazard pay and stuff like that, or their, you know, disability or things like that, which I think is a concern.
They can't, they can't even go on.
Well, exactly, right. Well, right, yeah, so that was what I thought too. So I don't know if that's the reasoning behind it, or if it is an insurance thing, and if so, if the insurance company is fine with it, then what, you know? Is it something that we might want to have the new fire ward discuss and come back to us with a recommendation? They can go over the ins and outs, or what do we think about that?
I don't think it's that big of a deal.
I don't think so either.
All right.
When I was talking to some of the neighbors around there, they were more worried about it being like a Tuesday and a Thursday night gathering where it repeats itself, and there's a kind of a spot for the firemen to go there and a couple nights a week. That's not, I think the, I'm guessing that's not your intent, is it?
No.
Okay.
Get rowdy on the Tuesday?
Clear that up.
It's not going to be a secondary bar or anything, if that's what you're thinking.
That's exactly what the concern was.
I guess the first thing is the insurance and make sure it doesn't affect our rate would be.
That's true.
Dollars and cents, which.
We have a note in here that the insurance company has checked off on it. They've signed up and said, okay.
They said it's fine.
Yeah, so if there's no increase in our insurance, I'm kind of like, Paul, try it for a year and with the intent to revisit.
Can we pass a temporary modification, or is it something where we just have to put it on our agenda for a year from now as a discussion point?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you change the ordinance, you know, you might as well just change it with the assumption that you're likely to keep it the same, but you can always go back if there are issues, obviously. You don't, you don't have to wait a year if there are big issues with it. You know, I don't know what the what the policies are. I know the fire department has some policies about, you know, what you can have consumed and still respond to a fire. I know it's a pretty low, but, you know, obviously, when you do those things, you have to be conscious of the fact that there could be another fire call. You can't have everybody on the fire department having three beers because it would be problematic. To have a beer or whatever, I think, you know, probably wouldn't be a big deal, but I think you gotta use common sense.
So if we totally forthright, we're already doing it. We have a bad call, someone goes to a liquor store and buys a case of beer, we sit down and debrief. So we've been doing this for.
Fire department was. Ever.
Ever, I mean, what, nineteen oh seven or something? So it hasn't been an issue at this point. I'm not sure we're swabbing.
The one thing I would would like to say though, is when we start talking, you know, when we talk about the fish fries and those things, why those went away. Under Minnesota law, if it's the firefighters that are there consuming, that they would be fine in that. But the minute they bring in somebody from the outside and start handing that alcohol out, they would need to have a liquor license in order to do that. So any fish fry, burger fry, anything like that, the state will require them to have a liquor license to do that function.
If fish fry is.
It's just.
Fireman doesn't retire.
Yeah.
And even even that, if they're not on the department, any giving, bargaining, selling, anything like that of alcohol by an entity requires an alcohol license.
There's nothing to stop people from bringing their own. If the ordinance were changed, people could bring their own.
Correct, so if they did something with the township and the township folks brought their own beer, they would be fine. It's just, we have to be careful on that line with fire department and whether they're providing the alcohol, if they're supplying it, how they're, you know, how they're doing that, that sort of thing. Because those are the situations where we're going to get jammed up as a city, is if, you know, if somebody shows up there and sees that they're handing out alcohol to people without that license, we could have an issue.
And Andy, did you want to outline that, you know, like parameters of when you guys will have alcohol there? Or just kind of open whenever you guys have some kind of function?
I think I'd prefer to just leave it open at this point. If we need to have parameters, I guess we can look at that, but the intent was just to leave it open. Kind of generic, like Brad had mentioned, you know, if we have a rough call and somebody brings a case of beer down, and, you know, five or six of us that were on that call need to sit down and kind of have an impromptu debriefing. That's that's just kind of what our intent is or our thought is after a meeting or whatever, and just kind of the camaraderie of everything too, so.
So it looks like the city's where they do allow it. Minnesota is like spelled out like that, that it's post-call? Because how often do you get two calls, like one after another? Does that happen very often?
We had three of them today already.
Yeah, so maybe. Your case here.
Directly afterwards, it's so sprack in a small town like this.
Right, it's hard to call.
And typically, not everybody drinks on our department.
Right.
There's, I can think of about four or five that absolutely do not touch it, just off the top of my head. And then, you know, even when, you know, we're together as a group, not everybody's drinking. And at our large events, if we have something outside at the Legion, we go through and we select, you know, six, eight people that will not touch any or consume any alcohol that evening, just so we have somebody to cover our calls.
Yeah, well, that's what I was getting at, parameters, like you said, where if there is drinking there, then of course you have to make sure that there are a certain number that are available on call.
Yeah, no, we always make sure that there's somebody available on call.
It's like a certain number of hours or something, right? A certain number of, isn't that?
Pardon, what's that?
Isn't there a certain number of hours or a certain?
It's six hours after your last consumption.
Okay.
And it's zero tolerance on any medical, and we can have two drinks within that six hours for a fire. But you cannot take lead hose and you cannot drive a vehicle.
Okay.
So there's limitations on, even if you've had a half of a drink. Sorry, you just, you can't be in charge of the fire, you can't be on the lead of the hose and things like that, so.
Well, it sounds to me like we have a consensus that this is something that we should at least pursue. So maybe let's get together and see if we can pull some language together, send it to policies and procedures for hammering out, and then bring a final recommendation to the council.
Okay. I think the. Like that, the the comment of the chief, you know, is I think you just have to keep that in mind that.
Yeah.
It could be alcohol for members of the fire department, I think we have to be careful in terms of what we authorize, but it sounds reasonable.
My thought, Bill, and the reason why I suggested we take it to policies and procedures to hammer out is if this is something that shouldn't go into a different provision of our ordinances, but that spells out those parameters and exempts the fire hall from that other provision.
Sure, no, that's fine.
So I I don't know what the best way to do it is, but I think we're open to getting to that end result, so let's just have the conversation of how we get there.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, basically, table that for now, or we're referring it to policies and procedures, go from there.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Here after our next meeting.
Have fun.
Thank you.
It's a Monday, of course.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Oh, I mean, we need to talk about this for another forty-five minutes or so.
Actually, that'd be crazy.
Sit down and see.
Next meeting, he's part of meeting. How can I?
Thanks.
Yep.
All right. EBS wants to lease out our space again. They're going to reopen testing, hopefully in January, but we'll not hold our breath. Anything more we need to know about that, Tarek?
Well, they said it depends on hiring too, because first of all, they want us to sign the lease, and then, of course, they want to start the hiring process, and they would welcome any candidates we recommend to them. So yes, they will be looking to hire.
So we're just looking for a motion to approve the lease?
Yes, and it's the same lease terms as the previous one.
Do, just a question, I don't, I mean, every once in a while, we have these conversations about city hall. I don't know, the, you know, the term of the lease is only three years. I I have a hard time envisioning that we're going to do something different within three years, but just a question of whether we wanted to include something about if, because it's specific to the address, if we wanted to ask them to include something about if city hall changed, providing a equivalent space in another location, but that's maybe not, maybe not a concern. It just comes up in your discussions from time to time.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be something you could just contact and amend the lease if we have to.
Would hope so.
I think we're safe for three years unless we find a golden chicken.
Right.
Very good.
Okay.
I don't see that happening. But I'll make the motion to approve the state of Minnesota lease between the city of Paintsville and the state of Minnesota Department of Public Safety Driver and Vehicle Services.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Brick, to approve the state of Minnesota lease between the city and state of Minnesota Department of Public Safety Driver and Vehicle Services. Any further discussion on that?
I just, I think it's a nice service that comes out of here and brings people to town, and I think hopefully they can find them to staff it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. On then to the transfer from the sewer fund to the sewer equipment replacement fund. Belinda's recommending a transfer of eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars for the Stamer property debt fund, noting that this is an annual transfer until twenty thirty.
I'll make the motion to transfer eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars from Fund One Fifteen Sewer Fund to One Sixteen Sewer Equipment Replacement Fund for the Stamer Property Debt Fund.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Sony, seconded by Brick, to transfer eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars from Fund One One Five Sewer Fund to One One Six Sewer Equipment Replacement Fund for the Stamer Property Debt Fund. Any further discussion on that? Hearing it saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. That carries. Hey, we have a number of mortgage satisfactions. Now, Tarek, if you want to tell us a little bit about this that we don't see on here?
I know that CNC, they paid up their mortgage in full on the fourteenth of September. And then the other two mortgage satisfactions were just on the, this was like a legacy forgivable loan that the city has been doing for, I guess, I don't know how many years, going back maybe fourteen, fifteen years. And it's just, and, you know, maybe Billy know more about the history of this, but I guess it's more of a formality to kind of release them of their obligation if they've lived in the property for ten years.
Yep.
Any other discussion on that, or do we have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to approve the mortgage satisfactions for Jackie Earl Burt, Ryan and Carrie Rolfes, and CNS Towing Incorporated, Craig Alfred, and Jason Larson.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Sony, seconded by, I'm going to give it to feelings, because that was the voice I heard first, as stated on the action sheet to approve the listed mortgage satisfactions. Any further discussion? None, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Okay. Moving on, in the airport teehanger, Ron, did you need to tell us any more about this?
I guess this unit, if you recall, previously, we had kept one unit for our daily, weekly, monthly rentals. I guess we were finding out the income or the demand for them just is not there. So we are going to lease it out on a two-year contract here, and the demand for that is there as we have this one, and there's two more on the waiting list, so, which is great to see.
I'm just going to say what I always say, which is if we have a waiting list, we're not charging enough rent.
Agreed.
I will bring that to the airport board, and I've argued that point with you either.
But we're charging pretty much what all of them are charging, isn't it?
It is.
Isn't it pretty much what everybody's charging?
It is, yeah.
I'd rather see them full than three or four.
I agree, I. But I'm not fighting it, I'm just.
Ten, twenty dollars, I mean, it's something that has to be looked at too down the road.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve the airport teehanger lease between the city of Paintsville and Jason Mertens.
Second.
I have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Sony, to approve the airport teehanger lease between the city and Jason Mertens. Any further discussion on that? None, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Snow plowing, now I'm back to you.
Like it or not, it's that time of year, obviously, the contract did go up by five dollars from one hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour to one hundred and thirty. I think their main point was the increased cost of the blades. I think we're all aware, seal has gone up quite a bit, and that along with it, so.
Any concerns about being able to get adequate staffing for plowing this winter?
No, I don't believe that'll be an issue.
Okay. All right, then is there a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make the motion to approve the snow plowing contract between the city of Paintsville and D and D Snow Plowing.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Sony, seconded by Brick, to approve the contract for snow plowing between the city and D and D Snow Plowing. Any further discussion? None, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. And the last of the round show of new business, Tarn wants to buy a new truck.
Yes, thank you, the two thousand and eleven F two fifty, I'm proposing to replace it with a three fifty or a one ton. It's got, the old one's got approximately eighty-five thousand miles on it and has seen its better days. We did get the two quotes here, one from Yarmouth in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, nine thirteen fifty-two, and from Paintsville O'Shea about the thirty-one forty, both very competitive, I think. And obviously, we would recommend going with the lower bid, so.
Do you have the money put away for this?
This will come out of the sewer and water replacement funds, so it does not affect the general fund, yes.
And the intent is to move the box from.
Correct, yes, I think the new box and the crane will both be transferred over to the new unit.
Any idea when it's inspected to come in?
I was informed it could be two months, it could be eight months. We did look at it this spring, and they told us they couldn't even order at that time, so.
We're moving up.
We're moving up, yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the quote from Yarmouth Ford in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents for a brand-new twenty-twenty-two F, I believe it's three fifty.
Yeah, not two fifty.
F three fifty pickup truck.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Sony, to approve a quote from Yarmouth Ford in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents for a new F three fifty truck. Any further discussion on that? None, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. All right, old business, the water tower repainting, Chuck.
Yes, just a quick update that, as we mentioned last month, that project is complete. It took them about three weeks to complete, so it's been back online for quite some time. The total final projected cost is running about thirteen thousand below the original bid, so that's good. In your packet is a copy of pay request number one to Slack Painting in the amount of eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. And we will be moving forward with the, once this is approved, with the final paperwork to close that one out and release the retainer.
Any discussion, questions for Chuck? Or is there a motion to approve the estimate?
I'll move to approve payment estimate number one in the amount of eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents payable to Stack Painting.
Second.
And I have a motion by Brick, seconded by Hertzberg, to approve payment estimate number one in the amount of eighty-six thousand, seven eighty-two fifty payable to Slack Painting. Any further discussion? Hearing it saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. All right, thank you. Chief Wagner, surplus property.
Thank you, so we have gone through the process of kind of advertising out to the state law enforcement agencies, the surplus K nine property. In preparing this, Jennifer and I realized that we actually never had the council deem it surplus property. So before we do anything with it, we would need you guys to do that tonight. But we did receive four quotes, or four bids on the K nine squad car. New Home PD had the top bid at forty-seven thousand. There was a private party bid that was withdrawn. We wouldn't have been able to accept that as we did not post it for the general public, we were selling the car as, as to a law enforcement entity. I was also contacted by the Benson County Sheriff's Office out in North Dakota in regards to the excess K nine property, so the boxes, some of the toys, muzzles, that sort of stuff, bite suit, bite sleeve that we have. And they provided us a bid of twelve hundred and fifty dollars for all of that equipment. Stearns County had indicated they'd be willing to pay two hundred for the bite suit. So I have that on there for you guys' consideration to decide whether or not to sell everything to Benson County or split it up. So with that, I mean, my recommendation would be that we, you know, approve the bid for forty-seven to New Home PD and then the twelve fifty to Benson County. They're a new program and largely donate, donation funded program, so.
On the topic of donation funding, after we talked about this the last time, we approved everything going into your capital improvement fund at that meeting. And a citizen approached me and suggested that a portion or a significant portion go into something like the park fund. That's more community-based, community use oriented. As sort of a recognition of how much of the funding to buy these things came from community donations. So that's not something that's on our agenda, I forgot to talk to you about it in advance of tonight's meeting, so I get it, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit. But I think that that is something that we at least ought to consider before we approve the bids on these things.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Sean, I missed where you said it was to go to?
So, we had talked, when we first talked about putting this up for bids, that all the proceeds go into your capital improvement fund. And it was suggested that maybe the proceeds go into like the park fund, so to fund things that are used by every member of the community rather than just the police department. And the purpose of that would be since so many community members donated to buy all of these things, that it could go to something to be used by families and things of that nature, rather than just more police equipment.
So I guess my argument to that would be that a good portion of the funds that were used to purchase a good chunk of these items, while some of them did come from donations. Majority of the community's donations did not go to these items. Those donations went to the K nine and the training itself. So I guess we wanted to take funds specifically for that purpose, I would say what the K nine itself was sold back for. That would be fine, but over thirty thousand dollars of the squad car came from insurance money, from a previous squad car. The remainder of that came out of the capital improvement, not out of the K nine fund, not out of, you know, any other funds. And the additional equipment that went into it also would have come out of the city's capital improvement fund.
That's what I was going to say, the car, I know was.
Yeah.
From your capital improvement, yeah.
And I'm not here to say that any which way is right or wrong, but it was brought to my attention and I thought it at least warranted a discussion by us and something that we should consider.
The donations were for the dog and training.
How about the equipment that he's mentioning, that goes into the park, for example, and then the squad goes into the capital improvement? Because, yeah, I think it's nice to give recognition to the community that helped out with the program.
I'm thinking maybe we have some expense with the dog park.
Yeah.
And maybe that much could come out to dog for a dog, I guess.
Well, dog apiece.
That's not a bad idea.
What was the, what was it, about twenty-five hundred, Ron?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five was my thought.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we took what the K nine was sold back for, plus the, you know.
The twelve fifty.
The funds, I mean, that would take care of our expenses into the dog park, plus some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a feel-good thing, but.
Well, we had come in a little under budget.
It's dog-related, so I'm, I'm, you know.
Yeah.
Think it makes a little sense.
Well, first, again, you declare it surplus property.
Exactly, yeah.
I'll make the motion to declare the K nine squad and all related K nine equipment as surplus property.
Second.
So I have a motion by Sony, seconded by Hertzberg, to declare the K nine squad and all related equipment as surplus property, any further discussion on that component? None, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries.
I'll make the motion to approve the sale of the twenty-twenty Chevy Tahoe to New Home Police Department for the bid of forty-seven thousand and the funds to be put in the police department capital improvement.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Sony, seconded by Brick, to approve the sale of the twenty-twenty Tahoe to the New Home Police Department for the price of forty-seven thousand, with the funds to go to the police capital improvement fund. That's all funds?
Just the forty-seven thousand.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? I guess my thought was we had talked about doing the thirty-five hundred.
But.
But we're going to take the three.
Yeah, that's going to come out of the fourth thousand we got for the dog, correct?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sure that went into capital improvement, I believe, so. If that had gone back into the capital improvement fund, then it'd be like forty-three and then four of this would go.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, do we need to do the math now, or is it easier to do it by a separate motion?
Separate motion.
Separate motion.
Okay. Then we'll consider this for right now, any further discussion then? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? None. Okay.
And I guess I agree with Paul on the Benson starting a new program to let them have the bite suit also. And I'll make motion to approve the sale of the remainder of the K nine equipment to Benson County Sheriff's Office in Minnewakken, North Dakota for the bid price of one thousand two hundred and fifty.
I'll second it.
Yep, that was going to be my question.
Mine too.
Did the motion contemplate where the funds are going to go, Sarah?
I think CIP, right?
No, this is just.
The park CIP. I believe it was the park CIP for the dog park.
Okay, well, then I thought we were going to take that out of the fourth thousand we got for the dog.
I guess I've.
There's your motion.
The twelve fifty doesn't matter one way or another to me. I mean, if, you know, if we take fifty, you know, fifty-two fifty for the dog park and any other things, I'm fine with that.
Twelve fifty. One thousand.
I'm just thinking it might be cleaner to take it out of the money we got for the dog.
Yeah, I agree.
And then leave this go into your improvement fund.
Okay. Alright, so I have a motion by Hertzberg and by Sony, to approve the sale of the remainder of the K nine equipment to Benson County Sheriff's Office in Minnewakken, North Dakota for the bid price of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars, with the funds to go into the police department capital improvement fund. Yep. Any further discussion on that?
I, I have something to discuss here. And the note from Benson Sheriff's Office, there's a note that says, do you have any idea if it would fit a guy six foot four?
Yeah.
So my question is, if it doesn't, is there a backup plan?
That's.
Well, hey, if you notice, if you notice, I did.
Yeah.
Posted and sent an email back to him saying, no, you're going to need to find a smaller.
That's what I said. That's not our problem, okay.
They're going to have to find somebody smaller to fit it.
Alright, alright, thank you for clearing that up.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? None.
And then I'll make a motion for thirty-five hundred dollars to come out of the fund that the dog sale went into for the dog park.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion to transfer thirty-five hundred dollars from whichever fund the proceeds from the K nine sale were deposited to and transfer that to the park fund in order to fund the dog park renovations. Yes?
Good.
That was yours, understanding?
Yep.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Sony. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Chief, I'm going to put together a letter to the school, just thanking them for building those boxes and things like that, and get it over to you, we can sign it and send it off to them. Alright, anything else with that? I think we covered everything.
I, I think we did on that, yes.
Yep. Alright.
We did deem it surplus.
We did deem it surplus, that was the one.
Yep, that was first.
I know, I think we're good.
Yep.
Wild emotions.
Alright, the golf cart ordinance, this came about because I got a call from Centra Care saying that they were no longer going to be drafting doctor's letters indicating people are okay to operate a golf cart. It just didn't make sense for them from a business standpoint or a liability one, so they asked us to remove that requirement from our ordinance. Policies and procedures reviewed this, I don't think we took a formal vote, but it was our consensus to move forward in this way.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-six third series.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Sony, seconded by Phelan, to approve ordinance number twenty-six third series, any discussion on that?
I still have, I have like a handful of people who have been contacting me about the possibility of, like, people who visit using their golf carts. But I can look into that and I can pick it up maybe with, at a different time. I don't know if anybody else has any feelings about that, or, like, basically just licensed drivers, you know, as opposed to any, somebody, that person having a specific golf cart. Or, I mean, a specific, that person being licensed to use it here, because if they don't live here, then they wouldn't be.
Currently, how are we addressing like a husband and wife?
They would both need to get a permit if they both wanted to drive.
So.
Mm-hmm.
It's fairly cut and dry, if you want to drive a golf cart in Paintsville, you need a permit.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm fine with that, I guess, if you have friends and they want to turn around your golf cart, they're going to do it in the camp room.
Yeah.
I think with the elimination of the doctor's note requirement, this is something that should probably even need to get to your desk, shouldn't it? They could just take care of it at the counter?
It'll, it would need to go through the secretary most likely, because we'll still have to run it, check and confirm that they don't have, you know, DWI within the last five years and alcohol-related revocation, that sort of thing. So the process should be fairly simple. And with the potential hiring of the secretary here in, in two items, you know, the turnaround time shouldn't be that big of a deal. I will just kind of put my two cents in, because you guys know that's how I am. I would prefer that anybody who is operating a golf cart have the permit. One, they, that are provided with the rules and the regulations, so they know. But two, like I told Megan, AMPI alone has eighty-five semis that come in per day. And the last thing I want to see is somebody who doesn't know.
And night.
And night. And night. Last thing I want to see is somebody who's not aware of our restrictions getting hit by one of those semis.
Right, I mean, I would hate to push it and then something awful happens, that would be horrible. I just, there are people who, it looks like from what I can tell, when most accidents, or it's either children who are driving them, which it would not, you know, a licensed driver would not be a ten-year-old. Or places where there are a lot of golf carts, where this wouldn't increase the number of golf carts in Paintsville, since they're ones that are already in use. But, you know, this is something that I've had comments from in the public and I said I would look into it. And, I mean, think of where the consensus that we should go forward the way that it is, just minus the doctor's note, then I'm on board with that. It's just something that I was asked to look into and bring up, so.
Yeah, I think with the elimination of the doctor's note, any visitor should be able to, I guess in my opinion, if you get here at three o'clock, you should be able to walk out of the door the same day with a permit in hand.
Okay.
The elimination of that. I, I don't know that we're at that point yet, I mean, of course, if somebody's out for the day or whatever it is, but perfect world.
Okay.
I don't know how long it takes to process, but it can't really be more than fifteen minutes, can it?
Traditionally, no, it doesn't take very long. It, backend stuff's a little time-consuming, but if, you know, if the secretary's here, or I'm here and don't have a call, in theory, it shouldn't take very long.
And how long are they good for? The year?
A year.
Okay, so if somebody's a frequent visitor, it's something they could just, okay, makes sense to me.
Realistically, if someone's a frequent visitor, send in your information, January one will issue the permit before you can even start driving them again and you're set for the year.
Alrighty.
Then if you get your DWI between January, again, man, no one's the wiser.
Yeah.
Unless we happen to be the one that arrests you.
Yeah, then it might come into play.
Alright, so we do have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Alright, the lodging tax ordinance, this is something that came up to the council last year. As for discussion, the township passed the enclosed ordinance. The Chamber of Commerce is asking us to pass the same. Township ordinance is included in here, it's informational for now, something to consider as we look at passing our own.
This would involve basically the motel and any bed and breakfast if there's, I'm not.
Yeah, that's my understanding of it.
Do we have any in the city that we know of right now?
Well, we just have the Beazlin and Suites, and there used to be a bed and breakfast on Business Twenty-three, but I don't believe that's being operated.
I, I guess I have never seen an ad for a B and B, so.
Does anybody do like Airbnb or, as far as we know?
But that's all not through the.
Right.
There'd be no way to collect it.
That's why I'm asking if that counts, or if that's.
I think it's.
Houses on the lake like that.
A resident is, a residence is advertised as an Airbnb, or something along that, needs to be along those lines, that should also fall into that taxing on there.
Okay.
I would agree. As well.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the motel is in favor of?
Well, I was hoping to get out there and talk to them and I, I haven't yet, so hopefully you can do that before we pass this. My biggest thought is, you know, our hotel, you drive past there at any given day of the week, they have a lot of work trucks for people who are working and are overnighting at the hotel and are not really going to benefit from a tourism tax necessarily.
But same as every other town that has.
Their motel.
Nine out of ten, the company pays the, the room anyhow.
Right, without a second thought about it.
Yeah.
So. It was represented to us at the meeting where this was discussed, that the hotel has been contacted, that all the other hotels in their organization are in locations that have this and that it would be, that they weren't opposed. I never talked to them, but that was, that was the representation that was made.
Because the biggest.
I had a chamber of representatives that were here, as I recall, it was Matt DeCousen and, and Mr. Bugby were both indicating that that discussion was had and that they didn't oppose it. But I can't confirm that that wasn't in another conversation, but that's what we were told.
The hotel itself would benefit.
Before I vote, I'd feel more comfortable if the motel was contacted.
Well, we're going to vote on it tonight, anyway.
No, no, but no, I agree, that's where I'm at, I'd like to make sure they're on board.
And I hope they are in favor, because I think for volunteer tourism, it'd be a very good thing.
Yep.
Yep.
So I contacted the hotel.
Okay.
And talked to the now new manager, but my conversation was more about them knowing that it was coming. She did not seem surprised. Our conversation led into the timing of it, if this was something that they could turn around the day after publication, or if they wanted, you know, for their computer system, their record keeping, that type of thing, like a January one start.
Yeah.
So she is going to, supposed to get back to me, right now it looks like this would be like a January one start.
Okay.
The lodging tax program shall commence on January one twenty-two. So we're going to leave that as it is unless she tells me. So we're gonna leave that as it is unless she tells me differently. I think for record keeping and for notification to. Some of the local people that might be using it for weddings or, or contractors. And then the hotel itself and their corporate people or program people would have plenty of time then to get that taken care of.
Did it say when the township was starting? There says it was effective on publication, but I didn't notice a, a commence date that was different.
They passed it back in May, um.
And they published it last week.
They, yeah, they published it last week, so ordinance is typically by law are, are implemented or are in effect. Upon passage and publication. So theirs are not going to affect until, you know, the Thursday, you know, September twenty-third. So as of Thursday the twenty-third, you know, Bugby will need to be collecting tax.
Will this have to go through a committee?
No.
No.
No, this is.
This was, this came directly to the council at a working session.
Yep.
Um, so typically, um, you know, with this. You know, ordinance, you go through policies and procedures, but this came directly to council from the chamber and Mr. Bugby.
And this was probably drafted a year ago, but. I mean, we just were waiting for the township because we had made it clear that we weren't gonna bring it forward until the township acted on it. And we never could get any, I think Jennifer tried for a while to get something from the township showing they had done something and just recently got it, so. So here it is, that's, that's the reason, but it was something that was talked about like a year ago now.
Right.
The council wanted to make sure a year ago in October that if we were gonna tax. Our patrons that were using our city facility, the people that were using the town, the facility and township would also be taxed. So there would be that fight against where we could get by with less money. Um, but it didn't, it took this long, um. I, you know, the date I got it was, you know, that, the data, the email I sent out. But it took that long, even though the chamber representatives were on need to pass this. And I stood my feet in the sand whether I was supposed to or not, but we are not passing this until we have, we know the township is going to.
So both the township and city funds will go to the chamber? And they're gonna do the tourism pay each?
Yeah. I think it would be helpful for our next meeting if we're gonna pass this. One, to get an answer from the hotel and their sand, and then also to see if Jacob or somebody else from the township can come speak to us about it and. Make sure that we're all. Chamber, yes, excuse me. And make sure that we're all up to speed on exactly how it's going to work. Because, you know, three of us were not on the council when this came to that working session. Alright, anything else on that? Okay. Paul, you got some applicants.
I did.
Oh.
So, um. Like Tarek had mentioned earlier, uh, him and I did conduct interviews. We had four applications for the police secretary. Um, I believe the unofficial cutoff that Jen had set was September fifteenth. So at that point, we had four applications. Uh, three of the applicants showed up for interviews last Wednesday. Um, based on those interviews. Um, we are recommending that, uh, the city hire Melissa Barnes. Um, for the position at, uh, thirty hours per week. Uh, she's got, uh, uh, legal secretary background. Um. That she had done for a number of years and had been in her job for fourteen years, her latest job for fourteen years before they moved up here and before COVID hit, so. Um, I think based on, based on the interviews, uh, she clearly was. The best candidate, uh, for the position. Um, so we would ask, uh. For approval to hire Melissa starting tomorrow. Um, she is eager to get started and then place Olivia, uh, I think it's Thies. On an eligibility list in the event that something changes with Melissa. Uh, background check and everything else has been conducted and everything is fine with Melissa.
She's good with thirty hours?
Yep, she actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe her exact words were that was perfect amount of time.
Good.
So, and it didn't look from her history that she was doing necessarily full-time hours at any of her other jobs, usually they're in that thirty to thirty-five hour a week range, so. But a lot of transcription background and stuff like that when she worked for a law firm, so.
That's important. Sounds ideal.
You have a motion?
Um, I'll move to hire Melissa Barnes for the position of police secretary at agreed three-step-one. Sixteen dollars and fourteen cents per hour at thirty hours per week with an ex, an expected start date of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Greg, seconded by Hertzberg to hire Melissa Barnes for the position of police secretary with an expected start date of September twenty-eighth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Right, relative to Ms. Thies, Thies, Thies.
I wanna say Thies.
I would say Thies.
I'll move to place Olivia East, Thies. On an, an eligibility list for one year.
Second.
Motion by Greg, seconded by Thielen to place Olivia on an eligibility list for one year. Any further discussion? None, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Alright, all opposed? None? Alright, that concludes the business component of our meeting. We do have a number of pieces under informational. Regarding our assessment reports on the website, garbage rates, the October meeting schedules. Letter from Bear Mediation Services regarding our police union. And then an email that the chief and I received over the weekend with accolades to the department for how they conducted themselves there. That being said, we will, now that concludes the business component of our meeting. Uh, we would be then going into a closed session to discuss making an offer on real property with parcel numbers seven zero point three nine two one zero. Point zero 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 zero, three nine one nine three, and three nine one nine four point zero 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 zero. Alright, so with that, our public meeting is adjourned and we are going to close session.
There look like there was squabbles in the building. I heard there's the indians. But we've ripped them. Once a lot of cleanup. Okay, they're clean up. Demolition. Well, junk cars, uh tires. Road graders, dilapidated roads, tires, rims, and chutes, uh buildings that dilapidated. Are they only giving all of that equipment out there?
I think the people that we live with in there are not as hard on any of the therapies.
That's my understanding is why.
So I don't know why I think that they're looking at anything to get out of their place. We have proved that it's happening.
I suspect we've got it, but the equipment on there, I could find at least one strike or two to get rid of it. Well, yeah, right. There are some downers that we feel. So either way, that's not a big. My fear is just the one I'm thinking of, putting this property out there for Austin, and I don't think it really works. No, because that's. Um so all these happen, these uh, these, this point is. Uh. Here's the quality, all this is gold, baby. It's like a solid, it does not have good light, what it's like. So it's like, you know, it's like. So he says, so he says, uh, it's like, well, it's. Yeah, I don't think that, uh, whatever it's gonna be. Uh, it was even long. Uh, she's. Make sure that it's probably. There it is. You're like. It's, it's a little spooky, uh. So if you have a, uh, if you want to. Do you see some sort of fire? Yeah, you can go, you go across. Then. There, if you wanna have. Purchase a place that you provide it with. You got access to the ground, you know, to base one, you know, and you know, I mean, that's. I mean, the way that person, by the way, they're just, they're lost, it's a problem, but they do phase one, and they basically recommend that they need to do phase two or not, correct? The other question, just throw a number at me. Where would it take if you, uh, clean it up? Ten thousand, hundred thousand, two hundred thousand? Just a guess. I don't want to be very, uh, uh, that's. Well, that, a lot of those buildings, you know, there's that. You got semi trailers, sheer dogs in there, cars. I mean, it's gonna take, uh, uh, to make it all. Yeah, is that even gonna be worth? But you're saying this is gonna cost two hundred dollars lower to clean it up unless we get some grant money? I would say there's. I, there's gotta be some sort of grant out there to clean up water, park, property, or something like that. No, I think we could get some, lose traffic, and then take it off. Uh, let's not, I mean, purchase money, whether we, what do we think, if they don't, they don't want to sell, or if they don't want to sell. There is a lot of. For me, they're all. Yeah. Uh, there is, I think, a little bit of the, property guys, they, 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 they want to. Like, oh. Yeah, it took a pretty good draw, twenty and twenty-one. And is it, is that realistic, or?
Sounds pretty cheap.
I definitely look for higher.
Cause I'm all.
Very well, is that, you know, you're. Yeah, I would say so. Because if it's, uh, if there's contaminants down there, uh, some creatures before, uh, that's gonna be a problem. Yeah, I'm thinking, well. Yeah, we really could purchase that as well. Thinking, yeah, we should, uh, maybe try to work a little harder with northern, or harder, should just, just take this river. See if they will have anything, if there's any, um, they'll clean that up, cause that, that will, uh, be a lot of money. So I'm looking for, uh, uh, three or four. Um, you know, I'm kind of like. Definitely, but. Usually, maybe, uh. We're testing. Basically, first.